Thirty-four minutes past six on today, the eighth of October. Welcome everyone, we've got a packed gallery today. So we'll kick off, number one, apologies and reasons for absence.
councillor, Anne, Anne Duckway has got commitments and therefore didn't make it tonight.
Okay, I'll propose that we accept those, is anyone second the acceptance of? All those in favour? That is unanimous, thank you. Okay, item number two, declaration of members of interest applications for dispensation. Any members have anything intrinsically involved in the papers? Okay. Number three, deputations from the members of the public, who wants to do today then? Any hands raised?
Yeah, hello.
Come on, head side.
All right, okay. Do we stand up?
No.
Okay. It's a very simple issue, there's an L shaped passage between Coots Close and St Peter's Close. The short part of the L is about thirty yards long and then there's a street lamp and then there's about just over a hundred yards with no lighting whatsoever. And it's frankly just dangerous. In the winter it's slippery, you can't see where you're going. I sent a video which I hope everyone has seen, which showed me walking down this passage.
Yeah, which one is that?
And a guy walked past me, I didn't even see him. My daughter, who walked to school through that passage then in the winter, used to get the ilk and school kids taking weed and stuff down there. It's just not very savoury, there's dogs, to be simple about it, mess in the passage, you can't see it. And it's, I would hope, a simple issue that this passage really does need a light.
You'll probably be pleased to know then that we do actually have an agenda item for that on today's docket.
Excellent.
We will be discussing that today.
Marvelous.
Number twelve. So if you, if you want to stick around for it.
Oh no, I'll stick around, I'll stick around.
Anyone else from the gallery?
No.
Okay. Lovely, we shall then move on to item agenda number four, which is to confirm the accuracy of both the minutes held on the fourteenth May, I believe, with the town meeting. And also the tenth of September twenty-five, our last meeting. Yeah. Lovely. Anyone on the council, have any observations, like councillor Brooks?
Yeah, we had good timing and apparently very improved, but there is one slight slip up in the minutes. It needs to be made clearer what the resolution was on the minute about planters. We voted very clearly that Open Bloom could not place any advertisement on to planters. And he doesn't quite read that.
Yeah, councillor Brooks, I hope you've got my email back from me and the chair. I agree there's some corrections to the minutes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a laptop, I was busy and I haven't seen that email. But I just want it to be said in the meeting.
But I did share the minute number, I'm looking at this.
Sorry, oh, sorry, yes.
It's really just a typo, I think, because it's.
Yeah, it is really, well, it's just grammatical than anything, it's, let me keep going.
Which minute number, which?
I'll find it in a second.
Thank you.
Just give us a five seconds. I mean, if not, mark all of that one. It is the planter enhancement, which is on the May one at five twenty-five, twenty-two. Twenty-two. If you look at your.
Yes.
It's there. Okay.
We've just changed the wording, which is a bit.
It's the last minute of that meeting.
So it's not changed, it's not changed the sentence, it's just changed the grammar.
Lovely. Are you satisfied councillor Brooks?
Yeah, exactly, thank you.
Marvelous. Right, so let's take a vote on that then. So I propose that we accept the minutes of both on block, the meeting of fourteenth May and the tenth of September, pending those adjustments. Do I have a second?
You're proposing, yeah.
I certainly am, yeah. Thank you very much councillor Clark, all those in favour of that proposal? That's again unanimous, good start everyone. Lovely, just to interject at the moment, I'm also suspending the standing order for standing while speaking today, ladies and gentlemen, just being fitting for today, with a lot to go through. Moving on to item number five, we will have the councillors' reports, but having seen some of the pre, pre put forward questions, there are a number of items that we must address in an exempt session, if that's going to, if we are to discuss those unfortunately. There are confidential documents and information involved in that, so if we are going to have questions, they will be moved to the end of the exempt session, but do we have any reports from councillors today?
Okay. Can I ask why it's been made exempt? Because I wasn't notified of that and councillors' questions don't generally become exempt items. That's the purpose of it, you're asking public questions.
Okay, there is exempt information in there, which is confidential, which we need to consider in a closed session, because if we don't, we could end up, as councillor Nick says, we've already got statements that are implying we could end up with legal action if we don't do that, so we're going to do that. And I recommend to the chair and it's accepted that we go into a closed session. Obviously, we don't want the public to all disappear, so my view of his, councillor Chris Nick agreed, the chair, is remove the councillors' questions, which is coming forward to the last item, we can then go into closed session and deal with it completely and then finish those.
Well, it would have been better to advise me of that, so perhaps I could have been given some of the advice and then reworded some of my questions, rather than just bringing it now, because it is a public thing, councillors' questions.
Yeah, but the trouble is, you've got exempt information in there, in our opinion, which could or could, and thus, thus going into legal action, we therefore have made a decision, and it was a late decision, but we need to keep it confidential in case, and you'll see why when we get to that, but it will give you, we'll give you time to frame any question you need to at that stage, okay?
But could we not defer them until, I'd rather not, because it seems a bit dodgy when you've got public questions.
Let's get to that item.
Can we not defer it until the next meeting? And then things I can have a meeting with the chairman and find out?
Yep, I, I think I'm.
Got no sense why.
Yeah, if you're happy to then do that.
Yeah, so can I ask, we just defer my question until the next meeting?
I don't think I'm giving you the secret, all right, it's your question councillor Martin Brooks.
I know, but it just seems pretty odd.
If you want to withdraw it for this meeting, then we can take it next, if you have a wish.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'll keep my chairman's report brief, I attended the O and the annual meeting of Open and Bloom last week, and it was a really lovely roundup of events, I think they've done a fantastic job this year, as they always do, they were very thankful for the, for OTC's support, both for the planters and just generally. There was a talk from the gentleman that ran the flower show, which was a great success at the. Culture Society, showroom, thank you, that's what I'm after. So yeah, all in all, really worthwhile thing to go to. Clark, do you have a report for today?
Well, obviously, as far, we've got another report, the office newsletter, so I'm not going to, you've all had that copy of the office newsletter, which gives everything, I think a fairly comprehensive thing for what's gone on this month. I will just update you with a few issues. Only today I've been told that the disability door in Church Street is now fixed, so it works correctly, and it looks as though tomorrow the winch or hoist also in the disability toilet will be fixed. So those two are things, the other thing that's come through, and I may have told you or just do it again, Historic England have at long last given us permission to fill in the hole that appeared this summer in Coots Close, so we're now on health and safety grounds, I've got a quote, and it will be done next week, because obviously there is a real chance still, because it's only got temporary barriers around it, the way things go, in Oakham they could disappear and we could have a problem, so I expedited that on health and safety grounds. That's really it, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Clark. Okay, on to cross the line for the seat. Any further?
No, there's nothing apart from a letter that's complimented us on the work we're doing in Centenary Field. As I was saying, yet that resident is present, so I circulated that to councillors, so it's complimentary, but obviously we're well aware, as we've got papers in the agenda today, that we still need to make more progress.
And of course, we gratefully accept, yeah, Prinsworth emails, so thank you very much. Right, item number eight, we have a paper from councillor Ainsley that I believe involves an individual sack from the public gallery, so I'm going to open the opportunity, should you wish, if councillor Ainsley would like to introduce his paper, and we might have a little performance if it's deemed appropriate. Councillor Ainsley, your paper.
So, I trust you've all read the paper, and perhaps I heard by ghost it turns on Leicester Radio, which is hard luck if you've heard that diatribe. I think that the appointment of a town crier to a voluntary position is something that, as I say in the paper, helps strengthen city pride and helps councillors voting. I think as we push, I think it's an attraction for the town, I think it's a really good thing to do, and I think that it, yeah, I think it's a really good thing to do, so I'm going to leave it there, because you've all read the paper. There are no additional costs involved, other than the purchase of a costume, and I would like to, once you've had a chance to listen to Kelsey do her stuff, and I forgot the bell, so that's my apologies for that.
Go outside and reopen the windows.
So, and I'd like, once she's done her stuff, then I'd like to then make a proposal to be actually appoint Kelsey to the post, so I'll make an adjustment to the proposal. But I think first, if you could suspend standing, almost like it's probably a good thing to do, and let Kelsey do her stuff, and then re, bring them back on again.
If deemed necessary, why not, yes, so I.
I don't know, is it necessary?
No.
Not necessary.
Not for any shock.
Hey, you have to go.
You need to stand here.
Show us what you've got.
Bell, who's that?
Oye, oye, oye! Hear ye, hear ye, proud folk of Oakland, by bell and voice this news I cry. Oakland stands strong with head held high, from castle stone to market stall, yet unity and honour, ring out to all, God save the king.
We have apologies, we.
So I would like.
I'm a well reader here, so we can measure how loud it was.
Yes. So I'd like to propose an amendment to the first proposal to recruit Kelsey Mullins as town crier to a voluntary position, the objective enhancing, blah, blah, I won't carry on reading, and that we approve a budget cap. Now, this is the cap that's physically just saying that the maximum we can spend for the town crier, four hundred and fifty quid, changed to the, which will be charged to the events promotion and military banners budget for twenty twenty-five.
Thank you councillor Ainsley, has, oh, question or?
We need a second of us, really.
Well, don't be discussing before we make that decision.
We actually need a proposal and a second, then go into discussion, really, that's how it should be, because otherwise if there's no second, then we don't have a discussion.
Well, let's have a second and then if, thank you very much, Sean.
Right, away you go.
Right, my, my only issue with this is that you're expecting us to pay this four hundred and fifty, five hundred pounds for an outfit that may not get used. It may get used once and then you just get muffled. The High Sheriff, the Lord Lieutenant, they all purchase their own uniforms, so why have we got to purchase one for the town crier?
May I respond?
Yep.
I personally believe this is a voluntary role, and I think it's wrong to ask a person in a voluntary role to actually fund the uniform that we're going to put them into, so that's why I put it in the paper, open to council to discuss.
I was simply going to ask, thank you, I didn't write it four hundred and fifty enough to fund what we need.
We believe so.
I, I, I might have also looked it up and sent certain outfits to.
We can, thank you. Councillor Brooks?
Can I ask through the chair whether this, can I see young lady, is that? Is the member of the, what is it, the?
The Honourable Gilders.
The Honourable Gilder thing, because I read that yesterday, and it seems that we've skipped a lot of the processes they recommend. I like the idea, but I fear, in the same way as Sally Ann has mentioned, if we buy you this uniform, we've wasted money on them, a lot worse than a uniform in the past. What happens if we only do it once? You know, Uppingham Town Council is a perfect example, they had all the singing and dancing of a new town crier, who was a young man, and never used. I've spoken to residents today who've lived, I'm an outsider, and they said that historically Oakland has no town crier, as far as they remember this. The last person I spoke to this evening is about seventy-six years old, so we're going back a long time, so I'm not, I'm not against the idea, but I, I just worry that we're just spending money and it may not happen, because like the young lad that was mentioned, he won a competition two thousand and twenty-two, never used. You know, we didn't get adults at that time wanting to apply. No, we didn't, because that's why the children were entered, because, we won't mention names, but the former councillor was sanctioned at the time and couldn't actually do it.
Anyway, we're not.
But anyway, so I, I don't know how we get the reassurance that if we spend this money, it's, you know, perhaps there has to be some obligation, I know you can't make volunteers do, but surely we, we need some sort of contract of employment drawn out.
It would be appropriate to perhaps ask if, under a show of goodwill, we could have a prospective schedule that you'd be undertaking?
Well, when I was asked about taking on the role, we said that it would be the two Christmas fair markets to begin with for the end of this year, and I have already marked it off on my calendar, so more than that, I, I mean.
So we might get two.
So, well, we know that we, there are, we're actively seeking to get much more involved in the community, so there's a lot of other events that we could invite you to, I do feel, and I think that's down, down to the office, there's the looking opportunities to actually promote, well, the office of town crier, but also to promote the town. And we're looking at things like the sickle event in next year, and the Christmas switch on, I mean, there's so many things happening, so.
Could I ask a question councillor Ainsley, I mean, perhaps it's sort of loosely addressed at both of you in this one, is this outfit, A, reusable to other people, should you not wish to continue the role down the line, is it essentially a unisex outfit?
I mean, it's a disguise.
It's unisex outfit, size wise.
Size.
Size by nature.
We have to find someone. Thank you, and I'm, yeah, wonderful, it's evening, councillor Ainsley, there would be a same size. It would be, the Oakland Town Council would retain ownership of the scarb.
Yes. I use.
I just wondered if we could insert councillor Ainsley, unexpected minimum and maximum numbers of number of events that people would expect, sorry, I forgot the word, the town crier who participated, so we had some idea, it's at least six, but no, it wasn't ten, or whatever that number is, that would then give us the confidence that the money's been spent wisely and that the town crier will have a big presence at that minimum number of events, whatever that may be.
However, does list some areas where the town crier could be used?
I like that to be added, that's what I was trying to get across, as a contract.
Very well. Councillor Ainsley, would you be? Very well.
I believe in trusting people, and I sincerely believe that we are not yet sufficiently organised to actually determine that we have a minimum, say, six, and so I think the number we may be proposing may be on the low side, so I think that's an unnecessary thing, however, we can keep a track on what happens, we'll be engaging conversations, so.
Councillor Brooks?
We've slightly missed the point of the ownership of the uniform, can we at least have that added in, that it remains the property of Oakland.
I think it's in the contract that's signed, actually, I don't know, I forgot the meaning, but yes, it's in the, we can put that into the contract that's signed, councillor Brooks.
Yeah, I think that would make people happy.
Yes, it was, it says it must be returned on completion or termination.
What have you thought of that?
Councillor Brooks?
There is one other issue, if we are going to put the town council logo on it, then we must be cautious that the person doesn't then perform for other organisations with our logo on.
Without prior consent, of course.
Yeah, but we wouldn't want to go to Melton and.
There may be a reason why we would want that, it could be.
But no, we wouldn't want to be working for another.
I think that again, you find it in the contract.
Yeah.
So it doesn't engage further employment with other.
Using our uniform.
Sorry.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I think that's, unless anyone else has any pertinent considerations, we've had a proposal and a second, I believe, on that one, all in favour of accepting, unless you, there's a, no, amendment, lovely, all those in favour of this proposal?
Oh, excellent, what can I ask? You may do as you wish.
Thank you, thank you very much. Can I just say, thank you on behalf of the council for volunteering your time and effort into doing this, it's very, very graciously accepted, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Are we going to have an official, like, introduction, like maybe on a market day, on a platform day? So we'll now know that we have a.
We'll arrange that, yeah, to the office, yeah.
It would be nice if we.
Yeah? Right, okay, now we've got the fun out the way, it's number nine, bank statements, budget, et cetera, so. Does anyone have any objection towards, any, I think that any queries may have been addressed already by the office, if I'm not mistaken, is there any objection towards doing nine one to nine five on block?
It's nine six.
Nine six, councillor of the five ten.
So nine one to nine five, does anyone object to that, councillor Brooks?
Well, it's, it's not really an objection, what I found a bit awkward was that the, the August accounts, which we rejected, had been just punched in with a September, and I think it should have been put as two separate things for us, because I mean, the fact that we minuted, that we rejected them in the past, and they told us that has all its issues, I think we should have had a. It should have been done separately.
It can be minuted separately, then councillor Brooks.
We can do that, obviously, the papers have got the August papers and the September papers separately, so if any, if you want to take them separately, so nine, nine one A, nine two A, nine three A, separately, put August and then go to September, then I've got no problem with having to propose one for August minutes, August finances, month of September on, which you're right, would be the best way to do it.
Very well, so we'll split then nine one A, nine one B, which will reflect August and September respectively, as well as nine two A, nine two B, unless, if that's necessary.
Put all the As together, all the Bs together, and that keeps it all August, September.
So, does anyone have any observations that they wish to, councillor Watson?
Well, I've had time to think about this, so it is referring back to the August bank statements, and it was mentioned at the time, but like I say, I've had time to think about it now, why did we pay a hundred and fifty pounds to DG Music? That is, as I understand, a deposit for next year's band concerts, but who's authorised that, because we haven't done a budget yet for band concerts for next year? So really, it shouldn't have been, because we might decide not to do band concerts next year.
Okay.
So I think that needs to be looked into as to why it's been paid out before the budget's even been made. I know it's only a hundred and fifty pound, as I understand it, DG Music is no more.
I think it's been purchased by someone else, I think it's still, it's a going concern, but it's.
Okay, but even so.
It was sold a couple of years ago.
Yeah, even so, why has that been paid out before it's even been the budget's?
Obviously, the reason is, as people who read to these concerts know, they're very popular, and they get booked up years in advance, like Ed Sheeran or, so you can't, when you have musicians who are popular, you have to book them in advance for the dates, otherwise you lose them, so we have to as a council decide whether, you know, we want to earmark a booking for next year now, the way, if coming, if you want to see any good bands nowadays, you have to get them a year in advance, otherwise you don't get them. So the decision was made to book them a year early, because if we didn't, when one of the most popular bands that comes to a summer concert would not be there, and that's what we were told, so we had to make a decision, and I think the right decision was to book them, to make certain that we could keep them for next year, because they were very popular this year. Obviously, if they don't turn up, then.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, and have all the other bands been booked as well then, before the budget's been made?
They are not, we've been to them already, and that none of them, at this moment, say any deposit, we'll ask them.
Well, no, but are they being booked before?
No, not yet, because none of them have got any bookings for next year, DG have already got bookings for next year.
Right.
Okay, next.
Councillor Brooks was next off the line, for councillor Ainsley, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to just say that things are slowly improving with the accounts, I did have a concern about the purchase of a laptop, that's been explained, maybe we're talking about the August accounts and it's not going to happen again, but I, I do have a concern about the fact that it was mentioned that the council made the decision to pay the deposit, the council didn't, I'm on the working group who decided now to bring things to council, which they're doing tonight in a paper for Christmas, so I think there's something quite wrong that the office booked it, and especially knowing that that's the band that we might actually decide, even though they're popular, that we wouldn't use them, because they are the result of the noise complaints, and the reason I have to go and give my time to record the noise, and they were one of two bands who were also above the levels this year, so it's.
We didn't get any complaints this year, I'm aware of.
We're lucky.
We had noise monitor.
Yeah, but we did go over.
So I don't say we had any complaints this year, so we didn't.
Well, I thought we had some rights at the beginning, that's what.
Anyway, councillor Ainsley.
I just wanted to reiterate that perhaps the decision shouldn't have been made by someone behind us.
So we will try and keep informed, but.
Because it's also come out of this year's budget, rather than next year's budget, that hasn't even been set.
Okay, lovely, let's hear from councillor Ainsley.
Yeah, I can't help but feeling, this is a dancing on a pinhead, the fact is, that we have got events that we, with popular musicians, you have people girly, this has come out of this year's budget, and as long as it's within budget, and we're not being asked, then I, myself, I'm perfectly happy for that payment to have been made, but I understand your point.
And normally we get a list for a council approval.
You would don't, until you get the budget.
All right, well, thank you, however, what I will suggest is then, going forward, we will look at. So, any further observations first?
Could I just ask what the PHS group PLC is?
That's one of my favourites.
This is for the toilets, Church Street toilets, this collection of nappies and such items, which obviously can't be disposed in the normal way, so.
Offensive waste contract, I think is the issue.
Yes, thank you for that.
Thank you. Any more observations?
And we're in a six-year contract, which we will be looking at for a short.
That's sort of better.
Okay, very well, so, we're looking then for, I proposed that, or I'm seeking a proposal for acceptance of nine point one A, which is the August accounts.
And all of them might look of A, nine two A, nine three A.
They're really limited, aren't they?
Yes, yeah, 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 so one, two, three, four and five A. I'm proud of the proposer, accept the August accounts. Thank you, councillor Ainsley, well volunteered, we have a second.
Five A is this bit, is that right?
Yep, I don't know.
Sorry, four, eight, four, five, eight.
One to four.
Apologies councillor Watson, thank you. Lovely, so that's seconded, was that, councillor?
Yeah, yeah.
All those in favour of acceptance of the accounts for that period? All those in favour of acceptance of the accounts for that period?
For August, yeah.
For August, yeah, for A. All those against? And abstaining? There's one, would you like that recorded, Councilor Brooks?
Yes, please.
There you go. Okay.
Do I need to say why again?
No. Absolutely not. Um, right, okay, next item, let's do, uh, do we have a proposal for the same for B? So one to four B, Councilor Enzi again. Oh, Councilor Watson again, thank you very much. All those in favour of that? Lovely, against and abstaining, presumably recorded again, Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Super. Okay, that carries on to item nine point five, year-to-date spend. Observations from the panel. Ah, oh. Yeah, go ahead.
The, the only thing that has... Right, going on to, um, recreation planning in general.
Yep.
Um, it does say advertising has now been overspent. So how do we advertise our Christmas events when somebody's already spent all the money?
Can I?
Yeah.
Come in. Thank you very much indeed. The, um, I believe that the advertising you're referring to is the advertising that is not for event management. So I think you are talking about the advertising for things like additional spend that we made on recruiting councillors, et cetera, et cetera.
So if I can, if I can offer a little bit of, um, a bit of colour to that conversation? Yes, we, we met as the finance group, didn't we?
We did.
And, yeah, it was discussed as to potentially how we could better ring fence and make more transparent and obvious our spends because there are a number of things, oh, you brought up, like the advertising that appears to be maxed out, but that is advertising for vacancies, for general, general council operations, not for events, et cetera, which are and should be encompassed in the actual events, in the, in the, in the relevant events budget.
Because it is...
So it will be elevated to... So it will be something like events, events advertising as a sub, as a subcategory to make it a little bit more obvious for those that are interested to look at that.
I'm sure everybody's interested.
Well, I've looked out, everyone looks big, right?
Okay.
If that helps to explain a little bit.
All right, that's it then. Thank you.
Okay, would anyone, that's nine five. Uh, would anyone care to, um...
I'd have a question.
Go ahead.
Because it was one of the things I raised about, we had a, a wrong entry in professional fees last month, but I can't see where that's been put now. I can see it's been, been, looks like it's been removed.
Can't be removed, it's...
Can't be removed.
Because it was in legal expenses, but I don't know where you've moved it to. There's so many figures in front of it.
I know the figures.
The, the Edison's three thousand pounds was mistakenly put as legal fees.
Well, that seems to have been rectified, doesn't it?
But then I don't know where it's been put.
Oh, it is, okay, Councilor Brooks, if I'll get back to you with that later, well, tomorrow, because obviously I can't look at it now immediately.
Okay.
But it has been raised as a point, uh, and has been, well, you fixed it up and moved it to the relevant place.
But they don't know where.
Well, we do know, but we just got the call.
Well, I think it's been transferred to the expenditure on the toilets.
Okay, which is where it belongs.
Which is where it belongs.
But yes, if you can kindly confirm that...
The toilet renovation, EMR, nine four oh oh. But I'll check. Thank you.
So if we're happy, do we have a proposal for the acceptance of year-to-date spend, Michael, five, Councilor Enzi, thank you, a second, Councilor Watson, again, all over the finances.
Exactly.
All those in favour of accepting that statement? Thank you, all against, and abstaining? Recorded?
Well, yeah.
Your prerogative, Councilor?
Yeah.
No? Super. Lovely, thank you, everyone. Um, right, so moving to nine point six, we are going to move that, uh, to in conjunction with item twenty, as they are inextricably linked, and it wouldn't make much sense for us to earmark something that is not decided yet. So we're going to move that, that financial element down to item twenty.
So that's a local member's public, zero control, from RCC, twenty nine K.
We're not going to ring fence anything unless we agree to it. Lovely, uh, on to the item number ten, telephone kiosk.
Shall I?
Please do.
Uh, you're what I was asking with the paper, I just want to clarify something that came through by email. This, um, any potential budget, which is going to be drawn from the service, covers not only the painting, but also the modification. So for example, if we would, the inside is, would need modification for, uh, whatever we decide to use it for. And so that's the reason to have the budget, and again, it's a cap, it's not an authority to spend. Um, and what the proposal was on to say is that we actually consult with RCC planning and work up a list of three suggested alternative uses. Um, I did actually, uh, determine whether we'd have our electricity supplied, should we, uh, use a defibrillator. And if you look at the newsletter, I popped it in there that said, or asked for it to be popped in there, that BT will supply electricity for the next seven years and we can use, therefore put a defibrillator should we choose to do so. After the seven-year period, um, things will change. That, that's in the contract, so, um, and they're going to charge us to quit, and I think it's really something that we should, for cost of adoption. We have the contract, which is included, uh, in ten one. Um, to me, it's a no-brainer. We can either sit, let's let it sit there and convert it into flats or whatever.
How much could you get in there?
Well, it's paint, doesn't it, really?
You want to try it?
Uh, but the point being, um, that, so the idea is quite simply that we look at the potential options, we, and then the office comes back with a list of three suggested alternative uses. And we just have a budget of, or a cap of five hundred quid. So I propose that we accept the adoption of the telephone kiosk.
Lovely. Do we have anyone immediately that wants to second that?
I'll second it.
Oh, well, then, Councilor Brooks, okay. And we will do that on...
I have some...
Go ahead then.
I know, I'm waiting for it, somebody else.
Oh.
But I'll do it.
So we've got a proposal, a second, uh, we best have a debate before we get it teed off and it's, it'll be done, and you won't be able to do it.
Okay, yeah. Um, first thing, yes, it needs painting because it, I'm surprised how quick it goes off. I never really noticed some painting it, but it, it looks shabby at the moment. Um, but I don't understand what the budget's for when we employ a part-time handyman.
I'm sorry if I left you confused, Mark, Councilor Brooks.
But also, um, I, I won't go on, but also I read the agreement which mentions the electrical work, which appears that we would be responsible for, which is the spur and the light. Um, so I'm not sure that five hundred pounds is going to be enough, knowing what electricians cost us.
We, um, we should see.
It's finished.
Oh, sorry.
And then I, it's not just my idea, but I was talking to another councillor. There is an advert, we don't know how efficient it is on the back, but we would like that remove the savvy, um, travel one and possibly Oakland Town Council use it in the same way as we would own it, um, to advertise all of our events on it. And then possibly later down the line, because I don't think we're going to possibly get the horrible BT things with the advertising. We could all look at the lovely TV display that's been put up outside the hotel, and that could be put on the back, and we could put our own adverts on it. It's sandalproof, locked, and it, it's really quite effective. So, oh, shut up, but, um, I did put the question of the budget and the fact that I felt that the handyman should be painting it.
May I?
Yeah.
Um, there's absolutely no objection to the handyman getting up there. Surely so, we, we can't force him to go to the top and paint the roof or anything like that, but I mean, if he's having to do so, it's all in health and safety and all that stuff, there's actually no reason. But we have no idea what the modifications are. We haven't decided on the use, so therefore that's the reason for the budget. And also we've got to buy the paint, which I carefully inserted a single pocket painter, two and a half, it was fifty-five quid, so we need two of those. You know, so I, I thought that was a very reasonable, and I just want to clarify that it does cover, the budget does cover modification for alternative use and the subscription and the adoption fee.
Can I just come back, one point I forgot, um, just one. The, the, um, this business of going to RCC, I'd much rather that we didn't. Um, I think perhaps we could go to the residents, after all, it's their payphone if we adopt it, and they might come up with some ideas that could be fantastic, we don't know, but maybe we do both.
Could I make the suggestion, I don't think that's a bad idea for a public consultation at all, Councilor Brooks, however, it does sort of suggest in there that, you know, there might be some weird and wonderful ones that aren't quite as compliant with planning as we might hope.
But somebody might say we want to do the book spot there, because we lost the lady in the town because she moved.
So I think that's certainly something we could...
I think that comes up with a discussion, actually, when we actually explore it.
Go ahead, Councilor.
I'm going to say, it's simply like, um, going to council, public consultation doesn't mean you're going to do what I suggest, it's simply taking up all their ideas.
Lovely, okay. Okay, on balance, I think it's an absolutely wonderful idea, and, um, yeah, things are becoming quite sought after things in the market towns such as ours, so it's a good idea. We've got a proposal, we've got a second, are all those in favour of accepting that? Oh, unanimous, lovely.
Good.
Uh, item number eleven, I'm sorry, it's...
It's me again, isn't it?
Yeah.
Sorry, everybody. Um, at the last meeting of the staffing committee, um, it was resolved that all correspondence will obviously be directed to our shared central mailbox. Um, that has been in use, but not actively supported, and I, I just want to stress the last sentence that says, non-compliance frustrates the council's obligations to comply with professional occupational health advice. Um, we are actively looking at that to see whether we can actually share, but it's fairly down to the individuals, it's, it's a confidential GDPR. So we're coming up with, um, the four recommendations. Um, the one I'd like to just highlight is that, um, we intend, or should this motion be adopted, that we tend to take persistent offenders who don't, and supplies to all councillors, who don't actually engage in the, uh, spirit of using inquiries, that we would, for the monitoring officer to come up and see whether there was anything that we can do further. Um, yeah, that, that's it really, I think, hopefully all of it, the paper, I'm happy to answer questions if there are.
Proposing it, won't we?
Pardon?
You're proposing it.
Oh, yes, of course, yeah, yes. Did I not say that?
No.
Okay, yes, I am.
Have we got a second, please? Thank you, Councilor. All those in favour of that?
I was going to say that, I think.
Can we just make a comment? So, if we're going to do this, which I don't object to, and for instance, we send an email to the inquiries desk, which, we won't pinpoint members of staff, but all those members of staff are going to look at it. Now, accidentally, you could actually reply to their individual email address because that's how they respond to us, and very efficiently in the last month since the clerks returned. So I'm even wondering if this is actually necessary, because every email I've had from a member of staff this month, or members of staff this month, have not come from the inquiries address. They've all been their personal email addresses, so it has to work both sides.
We, this, this is something that, um, the staffing committee actually discussed a little earlier, and yes, we need to enforce the bilateral use of the inquiries line rather than, uh, anything else to avoid the reply all, um, and it going to unintended or unsuitable email addresses, absolutely. So, yeah, that will be looked at also.
My other thing about this, I might have put it out there on day as well, is that we have a member of staff to look at the emails and distribute, who doesn't work on Monday to Tuesday. So does that mean, and I was corrected, but if we're doing it the way it should be done, then nothing that comes in over the weekend is dealt with till Wednesday. I know, uh, the clerk has said that he does it, but is that right? He should be doing it because then he's looking at emails that he might not need to be looking at in his...
May I, may I, I'll just put a little preface into this. Um, the idea of having the emails, uh, the inquiries, uh, line is so that it can be distributed by any member of staff and addressed by any member of staff. So it takes the burden off individuals and it stops the accumulation of certain emails to certain individuals in, in a manner that is lopsided for the office. So they're given, they're empowered to deal with the inquiries inbox as they see fit, and as such, that will be dealt with by whomever chooses to do so as allocated to do so.
But that's not what it's saying, is it? Actually.
Yeah, but is, could I just, I mean...
Uh, yes, you may, go ahead.
Could I just, what we're doing now, obviously, we've now got three members of staff, the office will always have someone here, except obviously weekends, unless there's sickness or leave and all the rest of it. We will therefore, and I will therefore, I'm the boss, I'm where the buck stops, I will continue to do the situation, which is also making certain during the week, everything is dealt with in a prompt and fair fashion. And in the weekend, almost certainly in my working family, I hope this isn't recorded, or it is, I will continue to look because there will always be the possibility of an emergency event. And I need as a clerk to be able to, uh, deal with that, and I expect to deal with that, Councilor Watson, and that's where it goes from now on. Like, for instance, the toilets, there's always a possibility, as we've seen from pictures this weekend, that someone will decide to be, what can only be described as disgusting. But we will deal with these and we will continue from now on, you can have my assurance, to deal with it in a prompt and efficient manner. That's what we do and what we will continue to do. Now, in my opinion, we've got the amount of staff and we need to do our job here.
Marvellous.
Councilor Brooks?
Can we have it worded in a way that makes it very clear? Because to me, it almost seems like that the staff don't actually need email addresses for when it comes to us. So could it not be worded in a very straightforward way that the, that all members send in their inquiries to inquiries? I don't like the inquiries address because that's a public email address for that. So I would have thought for a different address rather than the one that's advertised publicly, where our emails have been muddled in with... But at the same time that it's put on there that staff don't use their emails to email us, that they use that, so then we can't get this upset mistakes where you just click reply and it goes to the clerk's email address. Do you logically understand what I'm trying to say?
Hundred percent, I thought that's what I'd already...
Yeah, but that's what we need with a proposal, we need to make sure that we get it...
This is about enforcing the policy.
And I don't like the word enforcing, and I notice it was dropped from the agenda item because it looked quite horrendous, saying enforcement, because we don't have the powers to enforce any of it. We, we have to work with the office and...
Uh, Councilor Clark, you have a...
Um, I don't know whether this is helpful or not, but, um, perhaps having a, an email address which is called Office at Oakland Town Council might separate some of the more items that go to inquiries to the, to, separately to an email address for the office.
But can I just quickly come in on? I don't believe at the moment that we have so many inquiries that it's flooding the waters or actually flooding our inbox. If it came to that point, I think absolutely the town clerk is perfectly able to say, change policy, we are going to use, what we're looking for here is a set of email boxes, isn't it?
Yeah.
Um... Yeah, we're, I would, I would, but I also want it very clear that the clerk doesn't email, no, I shouldn't say the clerk, the staff don't email from their personal addresses to us.
I, I literally, why not? Well, I do agree that we should be trying to enforce bilateral.
Yes, uh, through, through a singular channel, um, to, you know, to enable staff to, uh, deal with that. Unless, of course, it is something solely that a singular staff member needs to deal with.
Yeah.
Councilor, for clarity, perhaps Oakland Town Council being the address rather than personal, because that means, personal means something to me, and it might, so is there Oakland Town Council email address we're actually talking about?
Yes.
So which is that, which number is that one? So I'm definitely searching for it.
No, we haven't said that.
Oh, it's up at the top, isn't it, yeah?
Yeah.
Also, because the councillors avoid using individual staff email addresses, I thought that was pretty clear, individual staff email addresses.
Yes, which when we start talking about personal email addresses...
I don't think we... I don't think we do.
Effectively, we should.
So we've talked about that here.
Yes, but it's not actually on the paper.
Lovely. Um, are we then happy for the clerk to manage a suitable alternative to the inquiries, should it be seen fit? Uh, we delegate the opportunities since, you know.
We use an office one, so if you require it, it becomes public, office becomes just. We're going to look into that, certainly, I'll have to check what, I'll, I keep providing, I'm only moving through the task.
Oh, it seems easy until I do it, sorry, I didn't say it.
Can't see the issue. Um, very well, any other observations? Super.
Do we have a clear restructured proposal, one proposal, rather than all these complicated ones?
That's your main problem.
Yeah.
It's the Staffing Committee, they know you on your own for a change.
You're happy to just carry on?
I can't see what's wrong with here, I mean, I do think that perhaps we need to add an additional statement that says actually, like us, authority to change inquiries to a, to another suitable address, I think that might be useful.
So perhaps a fifth.
Four of.
Yeah. To add another, yes, to use an alternative address to inquiries, exactly.
Okay, are we, are you happy that you're suited and limited for that one?
I'm recording it, so.
Ah, of course we are, magical, droid technology.
Okay.
Lovely, so, uh, are you happy, Councillor, to do that block, or do you want to do individually?
Personally, I'm happy to do it.
Yep, super.
Techno comes from all of you.
Yes. Are you seconding it?
All those in favour of the adoption? Ah, unanimous again.
Twelve. This is good as well.
Four, as you like. Uh, lovely, on to item number twelve, passageway light. Lovely solicitor, uh, pays for it by the office. Um, so we have had an inquiry from Mr. John Fowler, who's joining us this evening, and gave us a lovely placey of his, uh, of his issue that he's experienced it. Uh, regarding the installation for lighting to the passageway between Burley Road and St Peter's Close. Um, we've had a response with, well, should I defer to you to, to you with a gentleman that, uh.
At the time, yes, because obviously Mr. John Fowler brought this up, and we pursued it with RCC. They said, first of all, we need you to endorse this as a necessary requirement, and I did, and we did as a council. However, we then got to the stage where RCC or the officers made it very clear that the finances were such that although, even though we said this is a priority and important, they didn't feel they had sufficient funds to actually do this. I'm looking at the county council and just smiling. So it's up to us as a council. Obviously, this is arguably outside of our jurisdiction, but there are several things that happen with RCC, which you could argue are outside of a jurisdiction that we get involved in. So we've had a quote from RCC, which obviously then goes through their RCC highway contractors, of one thousand seven hundred and fifty, because obviously to do this job involves quite a bit of work, which is trenching along considerable passage to actually put the electricity in and put a, a new light up. So it's up to the council now, having got the quote, whether they wish to go forward with this or not, that's your decision.
Uh, we have, yeah, go ahead, Councillor Brooks, you have any questions?
You say we have a quote, it says approximate. Um, I I wouldn't like this to go ahead, but knowing that we should have free quotes, and I think the RCC would probably work under that basis as well. I would prefer if it didn't say approximate tonight, um.
It would be nice to have a quote of an estimate.
Yeah, the the other issue is that we lost the contract for street lighting, and apparently RCC lost the contract for street lighting. Now, my my recollection of it is that we pay the electricity, we might go into the finer details of it, but when I was on this council at that time, RCC said that they would pay for all the installations, repairs and maintenance of street lighting, and we would only be responsible for the electricity. So I, I, but on the other hand, I I know as a, as a parish council, we can pay for these things, but I I I find it quite bizarre that, you know, random county councils say that they haven't got the money to pay one thousand seven hundred and fifty pounds. That's a lot to us.
That's good.
Can I clarify?
Yeah, I I was going to say, we are blessed with the presence of a county councillor in our midst tonight, so if I might open it.
It's in this year's budget. We've already had lots of conversations about your own budget.
Yeah.
You can't just drop nearly two thousand pounds into a budget. If you wanted to wait a year and ask again to, and they might be, might be prepared to push it into next year's budgeting process, but it won't, you know, it, things, there's a budgeting process, as you all know, and it's very rigid, sorry, but it is. And it's not in this budget.
And that was the question I was going to add, where would we budget it from? And then I'd probably get the answer, it comes from our reserves, which is obviously said. But I I don't really want this to be stalled for, it's not just this resident, it's everybody who uses that path, knowing that in that area, we've had a, a serious incident recently, and not in the alleyway, but in Burley Road, near Cuts Close, but, so the the gentleman said he walked down there, didn't see the man passing him, that could be a lady walking her dog or anything, so I think it is something we should do, but I'd like to see it done properly with the proper quotes, and is it coming from our maintenance or is it reserved or whatever?
Let's see.
So, no, I'll shut up now.
Sorry, uh, go ahead, Councillor Ainsley, you have a.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm I'm guessing that this, there is no budget allocated from this year, so therefore it would need to come from reserves, which is what you intimated. And to do that, we need to actually make a statement in accordance with our financial regulations, and I I quickly drafted a quick statement that says, council approves expenditure of seventeen fifteen, or a cap of seventeen fifteen, let's put it that way, shall we? Which lies outside the budget for financial year twenty twenty-five, and spent is justified for safety reasons and supports the objective of making Oakham a pleasant place to live. So we have to actually specify the streeting objective and the reason why we want to go out, spend on reserves. So we would, I would like to propose that as an amendment, should we go ahead? This statement that actually, in accordance with the paper that's coming later, uh, proves expenditure outside of budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and I can give you written notes on that.
Thank you very much, Councillor Ainsley. Councillor Nipps?
Uh, yeah, so do we have an agreement from RCC that they would pay for the electricity?
No, so the word, just as a bit of a placey for you, generally speaking, RCC has paid for the lighting infrastructure, OTC has been responsible for the electricity for usage.
Right.
And that is currently the, the rough, uh, point that we are doing.
Community lighting is a budget item, I think it's twenty, twenty eight K.
Twenty eight K, so we have to budget for the.
Well, it's a lot of budget for this year, twenty eight K, thereabouts. Obviously, when the electricity bill went up enormously, we had a bit of angst here.
I I can't imagine that an extra light would be enormously impactful, but yes, I, yeah, just for clarity for you, yes, we, we pay the lighting infrastructure. Sorry, electricity, not infrastructure, apologies.
I'm worried about the precise figure that Mr. Ainsley has just quoted, because as I did point out, it says it's approximate cost.
Okay.
So I I think maybe if we, so it doesn't get dragged out for the residents, that maybe we should go higher, a budget cap higher.
Yes.
And then when it comes through, it comes to council for approval, as it should do, but I don't want to stall it.
No, one, uh, Councillor.
I would expect, I might be wrong, that uh, RCC are going to use their approved and contracted supplier for all this type of work.
Highways is a real issue.
And therefore they should be able to give us a firm price for the work.
So then, shall we, if you would.
It's not as if they're going out three quotes, they've got one, how much is it going to cost us to do that job there? I need to know.
So if you could kindly turn that estimate into a quote?
Yes, because Councillor Brooks advised, there's a slight complication here, and that, that they're lost. I don't like to use the word lost, it looks as though they're misplaced, but they know they're at the point in time, you're right, as far as I'm aware, of a contractor that does this work, but they might well get one very shortly, I don't know, looking at county councillor. So when they get one, we will get a firm quote, is what I'm told.
Can I?
Please, go on.
Uh, we are indeed doing exactly the process, which you don't have to do if you go through our thing.
Yeah.
Which is that we are going through all this rigmarole to fulfill all the obligations to get an approved contractor, which you don't have to do, because we're that it.
Yeah, because of pay, or like you said, you know.
So the only issue we've got outstanding is a seventeen fifty then, so do we go and suggest that by Councillor Brooks was saying a, a cap of two K, and then, uh.
I would, my, Chris is always very cautious, this car. I I would say we double it, and then, you know, don't tell that one county council, I hope they're not watching.
This is recorded.
Just double the.
And double it.
We don't have an issue where next month they come back to the office and say, by the way, it's two and a half thousand pounds.
Nor are we obliged to use all of the funds to do so, it just gives us the headroom so that we do not have to revisit this as an agenda item. Okay, so.
Can I just make a couple of observations? It's like going down there and talk to one of the residents, and partly we're talking about the lighting in that passageway, but also the trees that overhang the passageway. So there's something about making sure that they're also cut back. See, when you looked at it, and I've got photographs, the trees aren't quite overhanging apart from the itself. The other thing I would, I would say, it talks about here about installing a trench. I don't know what's in it, but down the middle of that footpath is a duct.
To drain.
Is it, is it definitely a drain?
Can't put a victim as doing that.
No, no, no. Because I noticed, the other thing I guess we also need to look at is at the end of that part, the path on Burley Road, it's a lamp, it's a light. Unfortunately, that light doesn't actually, it shines onto the road, not onto the footpath. So perhaps getting the, looking at putting a second light on that lamp post, so some of the light actually shines down into the footpath, which then will give us three lights. One in the middle where they're positioned at the moment, and one halfway down, and then one at the end.
Would you like to make that? So if if we use this paper as the vehicle by which we manage this particular, uh, query for Burley Road, would you like to make the suggestion that we amend, uh, this proposal to include your suggestion?
It would be useful, well, again, it's, it seemed to me to be useful when they're looking at, because you have to get a quote.
Yes.
For looking at adding an additional light to the lamp, would you agree that the, um, the lamp post on Burley Road would help to illuminate that end of the path?
And one that's supposed to have the dog put in.
Hang on, Councillor Brooks, I just, to first.
Let's just, experience tells me, and there's numbers, uh, just an annoying fact, but obviously RCC planning has to be involved, because would you believe it, not I'm saying it's going to happen this time, some people do not like streetlights in their back garden or near their back garden. So the reason we have to go through RCC planning is, although you may consider it very important to have light in that area, there may be someone who's making something up here who's got a telescope, who won't be particularly happy when their back garden is illuminated, and they they have to have their views listened to. So that's what we're going to.
Councillor, screen over the light.
One of the things I think we should explore, and that would apply to the other footpath that goes from, um, down to, um, to Stamford Road, is low level lights along the park footpath, so it's illuminated at ground level rather than. I don't know whether that would help, if you have lights that are this high off the ground rather than that high.
Easy, big tent shake, absolutely.
Yeah, that's probably get randomized.
You are getting it off scope here, guys.
Can I, can I throw a couple of words of caution here? I think you started off with a very sensible, straightforward proposal, ladies and gentlemen. There are a number of issues that I can see coming up. I get lots of complaints from people about lights intruding into their houses. Also, you're assuming that the lamp post will be capable of taking another lamp, it may not. The Pope, the actual energy, you know, it may not be as easy to fit another lamp on the very existing lamp post. They'll probably come back and photograph a new, it wouldn't surprise me from experience, with a whole new lamp post.
Not as good as DAD to replace the original, but there you go.
But, you know, it, it, you could end up finding yourself inadvertently delaying the very thing that you want to expedite.
Yeah, so my understanding is that, uh, is Clark to ask you a question? Um, that this has already been essentially what RCC have been very keen to go ahead with, and it's ratified then already in inasmuch that this is the scope they will undertake.
You can, I can assure you that in negotiations with RCC, and maybe the county council, hoping here, we will discuss these matters and try and find a solution if the, if the budget is set, so that I can do those negotiations.
So my suggestion, and I'll welcome any, uh, any commentary, is that we do indeed double the.
I mean, we can round it up to four thousand.
Four thousand. I think that's session.
It's more happening, isn't it, it's not spending it, but it just.
Quite, quite unlike your normal commentary council. Let's, let's, okay, I'll take that on board, so shall we propose then that the budget cap does not exceed four thousand pounds? That allows us sufficient scope to potentially look at other options, but gives us the option to simply explore this one as written. So then.
So he, 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 he's a proposer, so the four thousand pounds has to be either approved or amended.
What the paper says in the one?
Well, four thousand pounds is not, it's a blank paper.
What's Councillor, earns his paper?
But it doesn't say four thousand pounds.
It's a seventeen fifty. Yeah. So I'm suggesting there's an amendment.
Yeah, but you have to, that has to come through here.
Why?
Because he's a proposer, otherwise it has.
Oh, I see, I see.
I don't need to propose.
Sorry, no, but, but Councillor Brooks did propose it in the original, so he proposed it.
Councillor Ainsley's paper, I think.
It's not my paper.
Oh, no, it's not.
That's what I was saying, that you proposed it, so.
Sorry.
So if you would, if you would care to, uh, to acknowledge the amendment, Councillor Ainsley, if you're happy.
Uh, who, yes, I'm happy. I don't see how it falls to me, but I'm happy to do so.
Because you spoke first. If not, I'm happy to propose it.
Yeah. And we do have to please out in the additional expenses coming from reserves, so that business, the statements I made again, are we happy? But what I'm saying is that we need to take the reserves.
Yep.
Outside the budget, and it's justified, and we have to give justification reasons, which is safety and supports the objective of making it a pleasant place to live.
So that gives us then the scope that we can do this work and explore anything answerable to it without delaying. There we are. So let's say it was proposed by Councillor Paul Ainsley, uh, seconded by Councillor Brooks, who was first off the draw, all those in favour? Lovely, another unanimous one.
Streetlight, thank you.
Streetlight to go.
Don't expect anything I have for this year.
Stop it.